Hi, and I'd like to welcome everyone. We will start out by rising and we'll do a prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our village of Hicksville. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Okay, you have the bills list in your pocket. Are there any questions about any of the bills on the approved bills list?
On the EMS uniforms? I've never noticed that on them before.
What about wastewater treatment plant panel work? That's a lot of panel work.
Those ones that got fried, the panels that LA electric did tell them to collect.
Insurance gonna help on that?
We don't have any insurance for lightning strikes.
Well, was it lightning or was it power surge?
Ones that just cost $10,000 to replace.
Oh yeah, that's right, this was from work they did in January.
So that wasn't lightning strike.
I think that was in the electrical surge. I'd have to double check. I can find out if I'm wrong tomorrow, but they just got around to billing us here in September.
We've been the sewer pumps and all. Panel work, that's a lot of money to be spending that we don't even know what it's for.
Well, I mean, we know what it's for, it's just not really offhand.
Let's all in care to make a motion and a second to approve those. If there's no further questions.
A motion approved.
One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Thank you. We see a familiar face here tonight, Conrad Beck. We see you every year about this time. Did you have something you'd like to say to council? And if you would, would you stand up to the microphone, please?
Is there any questions?
So what is already deductible? Something like that happened. It's a power surge.
Lightning would be, lightning to like pump or whatever.
Sound like.
Property is a thousand dollars deductible.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at, but I did look at the deductible.
It was in winter, so I'm not 100% sure.
So they weren't terminated if there was a surge or a light?
Oh, the light.
Surge maybe.
It could be lightning in January in Hicksville. It's happened.
I'll find out. Yeah, I'll just.
You have liability insurance information in your pocket. I wonder if you got a chance to read it or not. Did anybody have any questions about that? Or anyone have any questions for Conrad? Thank you for coming all this way. Appreciate it. Nice to see you again.
Even though it was like an automatic renewal, should they still do motion?
Yeah, because we're in like a multiple year.
We said we really need to, but I think we do anyway. Just I'd probably just do anything. I mean, the premium went up $115 from last year for anybody.
So the total cost that the motion will approve will be what?
Forty-seven zero eight seven.
I'll have the motion accepted. 40% of this package.
Okay. Ron made a motion to renew the insurance coverage for $47,087.
Anyone else wants a second? One second.
You say it's the same count except for a slight increase.
Yeah, they adjusted property values by a percentage. Otherwise, coverage stays the same.
Okay. Go. One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Thank you. Jessica Myers from the Defiance County Drug Free Coalition sent me an email this afternoon and said that she is not going to be able to attend the meeting like she wanted to tonight and plan to. But in her absence, I will tell you that the Defiance County Drug Free Coalition will be hosting two drug awareness forums. One is in Hicksville on Tuesday, October 18th. In coordination with Jane, it says, from Community Memorial Hospital. And the other one is in Defiance on Thursday, October 20th. So hopefully there'll be flyers out and about around this forum coming up. She'll probably try to come to the next meeting. So we're on to boards and commissions. And Val, I see that you're here. Did you have anything that you would like to tell council? Mark Savage has started the parking lot. Is he also going to do the ball diamonds? Oh, no, okay. All right. Anything else? Does anybody have any questions for Val? All right. Is there anyone else here for boards, from boards and commissions? All right. We'll go on to council committee reports. I did not see any minutes in the packet from any of the committee meetings, so any committees have anything to report? Okay. Administrators' report.
Two tiny things. We did write 70 tons of trash for general pickup. Chipper truck's been out and about, but we're not chipping what people are putting out. It's for a tree where people don't think we're chipping, chipping and the drags. It's just for our own use. Other than that, I don't know. Oh, well, Cheryl did up the village auction results. Anybody's got any questions on other different departments did on there? Pretty self-advocatory.
Yeah, it was nice to see. We've never done that before. I think Kent kept track of it as the auction went along and Cheryl.
Ron did the auction.
How did it all out? Ron did a great job at the auction. He kept things moving and it went really well. Thank you, Ron. It was very good.
I heard the same thing. You did a great job.
Went very well.
Better run that one up a flagpole. That don't happen, I'm telling you. Right from, right from the administrator.
Yeah, went really well.
Thank you.
And thanks for those people who came and helped with that, the village employees and council members.
Yes, and thanks, thanks to Bruce Guilford Realty. He let us use his clerking system and used his sound system. So thanks to him.
And thanks to Kent's wife Hannah for the work that she did. We are ready for the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2016-12, first reading by caption only, an ordinance rezoning part of lot number 24 to the auditors' plat to the village of Hicksville, Ohio. And this note for the record, I emailed them to Cheryl, but the version, the final version will have Diane listed as the mayor and Cheryl listed. I went off of an old one and it has the wrong mayor. I emailed the change back to Cheryl, but didn't get on the desk. And this is what we talked about last week. Because of our ordinance that talks about the zoning changes, we got hacked on this within 20 days of when our last one is. Does not have to pass as an emergency, but it does need the rules to be suspended and have all three readings tonight.
We suspend the rules. One second.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Second, third reading ordinance 2016-12 by caption only, an ordinance rezoning part of lot number 24 to the auditors' plat to the village of Hicksville, Ohio.
If I could, please. I went out there and spent some time on Mr. Slattery's lot. I've also been working with Nagel Construction, who is running a sewer right out from the crick, I don't know what to call it, in public. From that crick up to 49 and they're just about ready to come out the driveway and turn. I took him over there and said, you know, what do you think of this? We've got an issue with flooding and we looked at some prints and we've done some talking and myself, who has worked dirt most of his life, and Nagel, who, they're big time dirt workers, we don't think it'll be a problem. But the stipulation is that if it gets zoned and then, say Jim gets a zone, Jim sells it, and whoever buys it, they've got to go to the city and they've got to get the permit to build or whatever, and they've got to follow our guidelines. They can't throw it in the air 11 foot tall and do things like that. They've got to follow our guidelines. But what I'm recommending is we pass it. I think we, I think we should pass it. That's all I've got to say.
So we need a, did you?
Yeah, the second, third reading, so we have a motion.
I would make a.
Did we have the motion and the second to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
So now we just made the motion to.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
The yes vote means we change it, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
There you go, Jim.
Next is ordinance 2016-13, first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, sections 181.051B and 181.091I, revising when employer income tax withholdings are due to be paid to the tax administrator and declaring an emergency. This comes about as a result of Senate Bill 172, tweaking that ordinance to, they realized that there were some things that weren't internally consistent as far as when deadlines were. So really, I mean, it's not a, it needs to be done. It's not going to have a major effect, but if you look in there at the bottom, they changed the two sections to harmonize when the withholdings are due from the employer. And then at the end, there's this business about if things are made by electronic funds transfer, determining which, which date is used. Is it the date they put in there, the date of the timestamp from the first electronic bank? So there's no confusion on one of those or maybe there's a delay in the processing by one of the banks or something. The reason it's, because it's taken effect already, so we need to pass that right away.
I move to suspend the rule. One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
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 Second, third reading ordinance 2016-13 by caption only, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, sections 181.051B and 181.091I, revising when employer income tax withholdings are due to be paid to the tax administrator and declaring an emergency. This comes about as a result of Senate Bill 172, tweaking that ordinance to, they realized that there were some things that weren't internally consistent as far as when deadlines were. So really, I mean, it's not a, it needs to be done. It's not going to have a major effect, but if you look in there at the bottom, they, they changed the two sections to harmonize when the withholdings are due from the employer. And then at the end, there's this business about if things are made by electronic funds transfer, determining which, which date is used. Is it the date they put in there, the date of the timestamp from the first electronic bank? So there's no confusion on one of those or maybe there's a delay in the processing by one of the banks or something. The reason it's, because it's taken effect already, so we need to pass that right away.
I move to suspend the rule. One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Next is resolution 2016-17, a third reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2017.
One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Next is resolution 2016-17, a third reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2017.
One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Next is resolution 2016-17, a third reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2017.
One second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
The last thing I have, this Cheryl and I have been talking about this on our audit the last couple of years. One of the little notes that gets made is, and it, it only generates out of one department typically, but the mayor's court fine money doesn't always get deposited within the one business day. The statute allows you to authorize it, any funds under, under $1,000 to be deposited up to three business days if you have a policy in place and appropriate controls put on to safeguard the funds. I've talked to Julie about it. It sounds like most of the time it could be accomplished within one business day. You know, it's just a matter of having the money and getting it, getting it over to the bank, but so that we don't have that mark show up on our, on our audit the next time. Cheryl requested, and again, it's just as simple for amounts that don't exceed $1,000. It allows it to be deposited within three business days, but until it's deposited, it's to be maintained in a lock safe or other locking storage device on village property, only under the control of that officer or employee, so that there won't be multiple people with their hands in there and potential for it to, not that I hope that it would, but just to safeguard those public funds.
Could we have the motion to approve that policy if you agree with it?
That's written. Oh, Sergeant.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Cheryl, concerning this tax ordinance, are we all up to date now with all the changes we need to make? We have one more that we need to make. It's not a state mandated one. It has to do with seniors and others, and that will be back at the next meeting. I was scrambling trying to get this done because I found out late last week that we needed this ASAP, but, and it needed to be done separately because these are in conjunction with changes in the state code. So at the next meeting, I'll have the one to address the people who shouldn't have to file. And that's just a village choice. That's not part of the state code. That's just the way we've done it, and we want to make it consistent with the way we've done it in the past.
Good question.
And that's all Cheryl's got to say.
Is the state still trying to take control of our local taxes? Is that still an issue? Are they, I haven't seen that lately, but I'm wondering if they're still working to that.
Yes, it's all during the meeting and Kim is going to another meeting, I think, tomorrow.
There's a lot, there's a lot of opposition for that still not to pass, so.
This is what Kim got when she went to the last meeting, and so it explains why they've done good ordinance. It's like, it's down to them for us. So if you want to read it.
Thank you. Anything else right now for as far as we are in the meeting? Okay. So we'll go to the department heads. You represent the police department tonight, Fisher?
Yeah. Two airplanes should be here in about a week. No, not this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it's a drone.
So you're there for the fire department?
Yes. Scott and I'd like to entertain them to you that Brock Evans and Blake Whitman be taken off of probation. They're two young fine firefighters coming in, so.
Coming in, how long have they been on?
Six months, and they're showing a lot of promise. They've got a lot of, a lot of youth behind them.
You say that's Brock Evans and Blake Whitman you want taken off probation?
Yes, please.
And they're on six months probation?
Yes.
You make errors and.
Well, I will make the recommendation that we do that if no one has any problem with that.
I would follow the motion, accept the mayor's recommendation to take these two young men, Brock and Blake, off of probation. Second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for some good news coming from the fire department. We were always asking for money and always asking to buy things. Scott and I have been working very diligently with Cooper Farms, and they have agreed to put in two dry hydrants for us out there at their cost, which could be over $1,000. They'll regrade them where we park our trucks, everything there.
At the Federang House on Jericho?
No, at the one on, there's a, there's a one out there on.
Mark's.
Yeah, Fermar Road. So they're gonna put it in. Hopefully this week they'll have it done for us then. So that's good for us as a village also, and our surrounding areas too. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bruce.
How did the breakfast go, Bruce? Or the chicken barbecue, I guess I should say?
Ah.
Sold out.
Yes, we sold out with the being pre-sale tickets. That helped, and with the different type of menu we had this year. But yeah, it was like an hour and 20 minutes we were done.
Oh, man.
Yeah, it's, it was a record, really.
Is it?
And we hope to look, you know, more for next year of expanding that menu even, so.
It was very good.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. And we lost Lonnie on our run, it appears. So we'll go on to the fiscal officers' report.
She has one also that is finishing six months, David Woodring.
I would recommend that David Woodring be taken off probation if no one has any problems with that.
Make a motion with the mayor's recommendation. Second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
So we will go along with the fiscal officers' report now?
Yeah, my cashier part, you notice I got the transfers done. And there is the list of the revolving loans up to date through August. There's the Media Town franchise fee payment of the 110305, which is a little bit less than usual. And then I went to Forma Meeting and for 2017, the employees' medical and dental insurance, I was very happy because the span of the numbers of Forma was 4.5%, 12% increase, and Hicksville's 4.47. So we had a really good year, so it reflects in tiny ways. And segment dental is 4.52 on the bad side. And I also put in this spreadsheet to show you exactly how much money we're talking about per month for the village. And similar is the medical marijuana information that was surprising, and so I'll share the dividend. And the small thing about drug use in the area, which is prevalent, some statistics that are surprising. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Cheryl. It just really surprises me when I hear the statistics of the deaths in Ohio from drug overdoses and the nasty chemicals that are being mixed with things that users think are just basic drugs, I guess. Somehow elephant tranquilizers don't really sound all that appealing to be mixed with drugs. I have put in the packet a list of local businesses and how many employees that they have. I just thought it would be interesting to know how many employees our businesses have. And thank you to April. She contacted all these people and I guess asked them how many employees they had, so, and it tells you who our major employers are and how many employees they have. And then I was looking through my email before the meeting, the social agencies meeting that I did not go to last week, but I did notice something that could help us. It says, "Community Housing Impact Preservation Grant Program, also known as CHIP, Attention Homeowners in Defiance County. The Mommy Valley Planning Organization is now accepting applications for home repairs, such things as roofs, gutters, lead paint issues, heating systems, plumbing, water and sewer taps, tap-ins, septic tank issues, electrical and structural issues, accessibility and more." So it seems like a lot of times we hear people coming and they ask us, you know, I need a water heater, I need a furnace, my roof leaking, so I would just suggest you have them call Mommy Valley Planning Organization. So does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before council tonight? Any of you sitting in the audience have anything that you would like to address with council? Yeah, Susan, would you like to step up to the recording place? The residents can't hear you on TV, though. Thank you.
I just have a concern about the sidewalks. I just, I find myself in a position where I have to choose between putting in a new sidewalk or putting a new roof on my house. I'm going to put the roof on. So what is, how much am I going to be penalized for not doing a sidewalk?
You can explain the process, Kent? You can explain, you can't explain what we do?
I don't know what the penalty is right now. Mike's been handling.
What, you know, I didn't see Mike's letter, Susan, but I can tell you, the way it normally goes is we send the letters out and we ask people to have it done by a certain date. Did you have a certain date on your letter this year yet?
No, in a year.
Okay, you have a year to get it done, okay. And then within that year, for those people that do not have them done, the village will go around and make a list of all those properties. We, in the past, brought in a contractor and did them all, and then we assess each property owner, their share of the expenses to their. You can explain, you can explain what we do?
I don't know what the penalty is right now. Mike's been handling it.
What, you know, I didn't see Mike's letter, Susan, but I can tell you the way it normally goes is we send the letters out, and we ask people to have it done by a certain date. Did you have a certain date on your letter this year yet?
No, in a year.
Okay, you have a year to get it done. Okay. And then within that year, for those people that do not have them done, the village will go around and make a list of all those properties. We, in the past, brought in a contractor and did them all, and then we assessed each property owner, their share of the expenses to their property taxes. That's how it was done in the past. So...
Well, then I guess I also have an issue with the sidewalks that are raised, that are raised due to trees that the village plants. I didn't plant the trees, and it's raised sidewalks. I don't really feel like I should be responsible for that. I really don't.
Mm-hmm.
And I have one tree there now. Nobody ever asked me if I wanted it, and there's no logic because if you look straight up, it is right underneath power lines. And I don't know who plants a tree underneath power lines. So I really, I want that one gone, or I'll take it out.
Did the sidewalk committee, when the sidewalk committee that address any particularities of how this process was going to work this time?
Just like you said, we did talk about the raised ones by the tree of the, of the village, and what did we come up with?
I don't know.
We'll have to get with Mike. Because you're not the only one, Susan. There's a lot of them that has that problem.
I don't want to be responsible because the tree that the village planted.
Yeah, I understand that, too.
But to me, if a tree is raising the cement, then I don't think it's homeowners' responsibility. If the tree is on the village's side.
Okay. Thank you, Susan, for coming. And well, Sheila's on that committee, and she's the chairman of it. And you might talk to her in a few minutes after the meeting and give her your telephone number so that when they have a discussion, she can keep you updated on it.
When we have the meeting, that would be great if you could do that. So we might, you know, let me know.
Yep, thank you for coming. Anything else? Anybody care to make a motion to adjourn?
You don't have a report?
Mine's done.
I'll make that motion if no one else wants to.
I guess I will.
I don't like food.
Second.
Roll call, please.
It passed out.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.